...this yet, so I'll just hold it the way I did last night and try not to blast you out with it. So, welcome to the candidate forum for Ward 4, Villarica. I want to say on behalf of the League that our CEO, Robin Collins, wishes that she could be here this evening, but she has not yet completed her week on the beach. So, we gave her the night off. But we do have in her absence some material in the foyer there that you're welcome to look over and take with you, and an email list that you can use to sign on if you are interested in more information about the Carrollton, Carroll County League of Women Voters. As you can tell, male members are welcome to join that organization. There is a good deal of information about the League's activities out there, one of which is this political directory that you all are willing to pick up. It's got a pretty comprehensive list of office holders in the county and in the state. So, you may want to pick that up before you leave tonight. So, for starters here, we will introduce the candidates. On my left, my immediate left is Julie Hall. Next to her is Peg Taylor, and then over on the right by himself is Michael Young. As I said Monday night when we were here for the mayoral forum, no candidate wants to sit in the mayor's chair in the middle there, so we've separated them again this evening. We have Jennifer Danlecker here to serve as our interim CEO while Robin is on vacation. She's in charge of arrangements here tonight, along with Jackie Phillenjen in the back here in the green, blue-green blouse. My co-moderator is, as always, my wife Cathy, who will receive your questions this evening, and she'll try to vet them and make sure we don't have any duplicates, and pass them on to me, and she will, in other ways, try to keep me on the straight and neural. Our timekeeper is Jennifer's husband, Walter Danlecker, and he will have a computerized time system. We'll be giving the candidates two minutes for their opening statements, two minutes for their closing statements, and two minutes to respond to questions as well. We have questions from several different sources, including some of those that were asked on Monday night. We had some excellent questions on Mondays, many of which we weren't able to get to. And the audience, you are invited to submit additional written questions, and if you'll just pass them over to Jackie, let her know that you've got one in your hand, and she'll pick it up and make sure that Cathy gets them. Because of the restricted time we're operating under, we're going to have to hold those questions to those that pertain directly to the business of the commission. As part of our protocol, because of our commitment to non-partisanship, we do ask that the audience refrain from applauding or demonstrating support in other ways, that you put your cell phones on vibrate, if you will. And there's one other addition to our protocols that's relatively new that I neglected to read to you on Monday, and I'll do that now. We have a new policy concerning video and audio recording of the candidate forums because the League strongly objects to the replaying of cut or spliced excerpts of the candidate forum in any way. So, we ask if any individual in the audience is planning to record tonight's forum that that person, prior to making the recording, step to the back or to the side, and ask Jackie to explain a memorandum of understanding we have with you about the use, want to have with you about the use of such recordings, and ask you to sign it to indicate that you understand our policy with that regard. So, that's enough on protocols, I think. We are ready now to, oh, I didn't want to mention, we're happy, as always, to have Sue Horn of The Star News here. I don't know if The Times-Georgian has appeared or not yet. Generally, they are here too, and they may come in a few minutes. And we are live streaming, as usual, thanks to Alyssa. So, we are on the website, on the city website, as we speak. We're heading around for the opening statements, and we'll start with Michael. He has drawn first place this evening. He'll give the first opening statement. Peg will give the first closing statement. So, let's start with you now, Michael.
Good evening. My name is Michael Young. I'd first like to offer my thanks to the League of Women Voters of Carrollton, Carroll County, for holding this event and your continuing efforts to provide education to the voter education to the residents of Villarica. I'd also like to thank everybody that made the effort to come and watch this here, present or live streaming it. I know it takes time out of your day, and time is precious. Tell you a little bit about myself and why I'm asking for your support for my candidacy. After my parents died, I worked my way through college at a prestigious private engineering school and graduated debt-free. I then served nine years in the Army achieving the rank of captain. After that, I spent 30 years moving around the United States, working for various Fortune 100 and international firms in logistics, distribution, and supply chain. I finally ended up in Georgia in 1996. We lived in Peachtree City for five years and moved over here in 2001. We've been here ever since, 18 years. Been in Mural Lake the whole time. My daughter, son-in-law, and three granddaughters live here in Villarica. I was one of the original members of the Restore Mural Lake group when Fairgreen built the Coffer Dam and it failed and the lake dried up. We used our own money to hire engineers to check and see what, check on Fairgreen's work and to work with Georgia Safe Dams to make sure the lake was restored. And eventually, it was. I'm currently serving on the City of Villarica's Main Street Advisory Board as the Vice President. I'm a member of the Downtown Development Authority. I'm a member of the Recreation Advisory Commission, and I previously served on the Zoning Board of Appeals as a chairman. I am invested in Villarica. I want to serve Villarica and make sure Villarica is the best place possible for us to be. Thank you.
I'm Julie Hall. I was born and raised in Villarica and have been a resident of Mural Lake for the last seven years. A proud graduate of Villarica High School, I obtained both bachelor's and master's degree in science before beginning my career in environmental education. I've worked in county government as a nature preserve manager and have spent the last 10 years serving my community as an educator in the local school systems. I also served as Chair of the Library Advisory Board for several years. I believe I'm the best person for the job of Councilwoman for our ward because I bring to the table compassion and open-mindedness that comes from working with and learning from a diverse group of young people that I've had the privilege of teaching. My aim as your Councilwoman is to lead by listening to the concerns and needs of the constituents I represent with the singular goal of making decisions that benefit all the residents of Villarica. I thank you for taking this opportunity to listen to each candidate and make an informed decision on who best represents your values. Thank you.
Good evening. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum, and thank you all for coming tonight, as well as those watching from home. My name is Peg Taylor. In 1998, my company transferred me to Villarica, actually Georgia, to start up a new plant on Fulton Industrial Boulevard. And as I went house hunting, I searched different communities such as Cobb County, Fulton County, and then Douglas County. And in my first visit to Villarica, I just fell in love with the town of Villarica, and I was very excited about the new development at the time, which was Mural Lake Community. I moved into my home in March of 2000. I've been very active in our little Mural Lake community. For those that go way back, you might remember the Mural Lake Social Committee. So, myself and another girl that lived in between the greens started that. And then, if you happen to ever go to the Mural Lake Yard Sale, I was the lead volunteer for that since early 2000 until last year, and so I've been transitioning that duty. Growing up in the Midwest, my folks drilled into us seven kids to have a strong work ethic, integrity, be neighborly, and save money. As my brother Danny said, governments of all sizes need someone with a strong financial background. And my sister has this in abundance. It's literally in her DNA. That's because our father was the chief of the Midwest Region for the IRS. In my former role as administrative manager for Grand Packaging Company, I was the controller, and I handled all of our new plant startup budget, the annual budget process, as well as human resource responsibilities. When the recession hit in 2008, we had to make the tough decisions. We actually had to cut hours for a lot of the employees. Together with our staff and employees, we found creative ways to still maintain efficiencies and productivity with less. Being frugal is also in my DNA. Currently, I am serving in the American Business Women's Association of the Douglas County Chapter. I've been president, vice president, and treasurer. I'll work hard to help the citizens of Villarica maintain the health, financial health that they've started on the city council. Thank you all.
All right. Very good. Thank you all for those opening statements. We'll begin with the same question we asked for starters during the mayoral forum on Monday, and that is, what do you consider to be the greatest challenges facing the city of Villarica? And Julie, it would come to you first, please, to respond.
I think that first and foremost on everybody's mind is the water sewage issue and the way that the rates continue to increase. So, I feel like that is our major problem here in Villarica. And I feel that the current approach where we are raising the rates on the water is one option, and I feel like really that's the best option because it puts the price increases on the users of the water as opposed to raising the taxes for the residents of the city. And so, instead of the taxpayer bearing the burden of that, it's the actual users of the water. So, I am in agreement with the current plan, but I do think also that in the past, they have used SPOSS funds and they've used general funds to cover some of those, and it might be a good idea to look at cutting some of the things that we want in favor of the thing that we actually need, which is to have good infrastructure here in the city. So, cost-cutting and the current plan of putting the burden of the cost on the person who uses the water is something that I agree with.
All right. Peg, we go to you next.
As we all probably heard Monday night, infrastructure is real important to solve the issues with the water and all the piping throughout the city. And I'm in agreement with the current council, the steps that they've had, the different phases. Tom Barber actually said it very well at the last council meeting, as far as what is needed as far as solving that problem, and I agree with the growth plan to grow our way out rather than having to impose additional taxes on people or increase water bills even further. Another thing is far as traffic. I know that there's a study that's been commissioned to study the traffic, and I think that's very wise as well. And then, public safety. I did pick up a annual report from Chief Mansour yesterday, and it shows the, over the past, I think, five years, as far as the different areas of crime. And so, I thought from looking at that, that this police department's doing a fantastic job. And I think if they continue what they're doing, even as we get more people driving by I-20, I think they're equipped and trained to be able to handle and keep us safe. Thank you.
And Michael.
Obviously, water and sewer is a big one, but it's actually two different problems. It's potable water. Sorry. I did that just now. It's two, actually, two different problems. It's potable water, which is getting fresh water to places that we don't have water. We need to get fresh water south of I-20 desperately. But we also, as more people come in, we need to redo or improve our wastewater processing. In order to do that for one of our plants, we have to move the discharge point 20,000 feet, four miles, at a cost of $1 million a mile. So, there's two different problems wrapped up in that one infrastructure problem. Traffic is a problem. They've commissioned a study, and hopefully, a couple of roundabouts and the bypass will come to fruition in a few years, but then that'll help. But we need to manage that. The third problem that I would say in the top three is the lack of industrial park space. Commercial industrial customers mean more tax dollars because of property taxes going up, means jobs, it means sales taxes, it means a lot of things. It means people wanting to live here because they want to live close to work. So, I would rank lack of industrial park as a third problem, and the facilities, this infrastructure to support that will take time. Thank you.
All right. Next question, Peg, you would be the first to respond to this. Tell us your positions on growth as it relates to each of the following areas, residential, commercial, and industrial, and how do you view the council's role in each of these categories?
Well, managing growth responsibly is the council's job. And as I, you know, noticed at the last council meeting, I really agree with Mr. Barber's presentation that he gave, and I'm sure if you were here Monday night, you probably heard Dominique talk about 2,100 residential homes would be needed to help fund the water and sewer issue. And yes, that's true, but one thing that I don't know if you picked up on, if you happened to look at the livestream from the city council meeting, is that if you had one industrial user, that's worth 50 homes. So, that's a big help. And I definitely agree with bringing more industrial businesses into the area. And the same thing with resident, I'm sorry, retail. Retail, I think they said that that would take the place of 30 homes. And of course, you're going to have residential homes. So, yes, we do need to manage the growth, and of course, traffic will be a part of that because that's usually for every house, there's at least two cars on the road. So, those two things together need to be handled.
And Michael.
I think it takes a mixture of all three, and it has to be a managed mixture so that you're not outpacing yourself in one area or another. Yes, you need residential. You need new people coming here because you want people to, you want people to live here. But the tax base of industrial and commercial is necessary to offset the residential growth. Residential provides taxes, but not as much as industrial or commercial. And of course, commercial downtown is a little bit of a problem. Some of our buildings aren't, won't support it because of the infrastructure. Parking downtown is a problem, so that growth needs to be managed. There needs to be a sum of everything. But again, the land use plans that we've got and the strategic Renaissance Plan that we have for downtown, those are designed to help manage that so that we get the benefit of, the maximum benefit out of that growth. Thank you.
Okay, and we finish this question with you. Julie?
I agree with the growth of commercial and industrial growth. I agree with that. But from the standpoint of a teacher, if you add 2,100 new residents and half of them have a child, that's an extra 1,000 people that you're putting into our school system. And in my opinion, that decreases the quality of life for every family that has a child in the school system because if you're going to have an extra large growth in the number of children in your school, you need to plan ahead for that. I mean, as a teacher, I've taught in overcrowded classrooms. I've taught in trailers, and I'm not a fan of residential growth just for the sake of the money that brings us. I understand that the city needs money, but I think we also need to keep the quality of life for the residents that we have because currently, those are the ones we're serving. And that's a very important thing to consider is that when you add more residents, you also overcrowd the schools, and it takes years for the school system to catch up with building new schools and adding on to schools. Thank you.
Well, in relation to what you had just been discussing, this question has been submitted again this evening, and it is, should the city be encouraging starter home communities in Villarica? So, Michael?
I think the city should encourage all types of growth. I understand the issue with starter homes. Starter homes are typically lower-income families, brand-new families. The homes are less valuable. The tax returns on those are a little bit less valuable than if you could put a much more valuable home on the same piece of property. But you need a mixture of people in the city. You don't need all older people that are well-established in their jobs. You need young families, too. You need kids just to make the city a vibrant place to be. So, you know, there's got to be a moderate mix of everything in order to make the city vibrant and viable. Thank you.
Okay.
As I stated, I'm not really a fan of residential growth. I don't have any opposition to a certain kind of housing. I don't have opposition to starter homes versus other types of homes. I just feel like if we're going to encourage residential growth, you need a plan that accounts for the safety and welfare of your children.
It looks like we're all in agreement here about having a good mix and a good plan. So, yes, I'm not opposed to starter homes. Again, I agree about the property values. So, a home that has a $200,000 value is going to bring in more property tax dollars than a $50,000 home. So, a good mix, I think, would be good.
All right. Financial question. What is the current financial status of the city of Villarica? How much do we have in reserve, and do you have any plans to strengthen it? And Julie, this would come to you first, please.
Okay, I'm going to say I don't know the numbers on how much we have in reserve. I know that the budget for the city has increased tremendously in the last 10 years. I don't have the data on that memorized. It was a really thick booklet, and I think that's why they provided it to us, is so that we could look that up if we needed to. So, I don't know about the reserves.
I do know that one of the big plans for the current council was to have financial health by 2020, and I believe that they achieved it already. So, that's a good management of funds. As far as the reserve, I think I heard it was around 500,000, so don't quote me on that. Again, I'm not remembering it from the booklet. Thank you.
And Michael.
The City of Villarica's got about $8 million in their general fund and reserves. Of course, that's rainy day funds for if something dramatic happens. They've got to spend money on a new intersection, or they have massive collapse of the water system or things like that. So, you want to protect that, keep that there. It earns a little interest, but you really don't want to tap that. Financially, the city's doing all right. The Water and Sewer Fund is now back in the black. It had a $500,000 surplus this past month, but I don't know if, several city council meetings ago, I don't know if anybody caught it, Sarah Hefty's up here said, made the side comment that that's going to disappear next year when the bond payment goes up. So, that's one of the reasons for this third increase in water rates because next year, the bond payment on our water treatment plant goes up, and the current surplus disappears, and we need to recreate that surplus in another increase so that we can pay for capital improvements. Thank you.
All right. Here's a question that was asked on Monday. The current crime rate in Villarica is higher than the state averages. As mayor, what would you do to help police deal with crime? Peg, you be first, please.
I know that there's more than one way to look at the statistics. In fact, Captain Parker emailed me the three different links to those different statistics. So, depending on their methodology and what they're using, you're going to see a different statistic. I believe that the current plan that Chief Mansour's using, he has a mixture of ways of helping to keep our crime down. Obviously, training. He makes sure that all of his officers and detectives are trained. And then, as well as the citizens, and in case you haven't been to the Citizens Academy, that's a wonderful program. There's also lady self-defense classes. He has, there's a lot of programs that the public safety has to help with education of our citizens. And coming up soon is the Shop With A Cop program that is real beneficial because that way, the cops get out into the various homes, and that's good, you know, PR, so to speak. So, I do believe that the current plan that Chief Mansour's using is a very good plan.
You next, Michael.
I think the overall statistics have been stated wrong in that question. I think that if you look and break it down by violent crimes, rape, burglary, property crime, and stuff like that, you'll find that the crime in Villarica is much less hazardous to the public than you would find in Atlanta. You know, we may have sheer number of incidents per thousand people, maybe a little higher, but I don't think the severity is the same if you sit down and look at it type by type. One of the things I would like to see is a substation in Mural Lake, police substation. So, there's been some property crime in Mural Lake, and it's been on the rise, but, and I think, I think a substation out there would allow better patrolling rather than, not saying that Chief Mansour's doing a good job. I like Mike. But having somebody out there that's closer, I think, would be valuable.
I agree that the police are doing a great job. I think that the statistics are one thing, but if you feel safe walking in your neighborhood, I think that is really the measure of the safety. And I feel like everybody in Mural Lake in Ward 4 feels safe in their neighborhood. We have had to increase the number of car break-ins, but on the scale of crime, that's, if that's the worst thing that we have, I feel like that our police is doing a really great job and that we can trust the leadership of Chief Mansour.
Michael, this next question is related to what we've just asked, but it is, what are your plans to attract and keep high-quality employees, particularly, but not exclusively, those in public safety?
I think that the city has made a lot of effort in that with the new medical plan that they've got. They've got zero deductibles for their doctor's visits and a very small deductible for a specialist visit. Drugs are inexpensive, so healthcare is a big thing for employees, and it's typically a really big expense for some, in some companies. So, I made positive gains there. I have a little bit of concern about the 1.5% cost of living allowance that's in the budget. If you look at the workforce out there that, and the jobs that are out there, six million empty jobs in America, I think we need to be a little bit more competitive to make sure we retain the people we want to retain. So, I'm a little worried about 1.5% cost of living. I think that might not be sufficient to keep the people we want, and we should continually look at that. We offer a great place to live and work. We offer great people to work for in the city. All of the people, the department managers in City Hall and Chief Mansour, Captain Parker, those people are great to work for. So, I think we're doing the right things, it's just that we need to stay competitive. And we got competitive, but we need to stay competitive on wages because that'll take some away pretty quickly.
I feel like the pay parity increases that they're giving, so that the pay that we are paying our employees here in Villarica is equal to what the surrounding communities are paying their employees, is a great step because even though we might have a great place to live, we might have great people to work for. You can't feed your family a great city. And so, I think that keeping our pay competitive is our number-one strategy. I know there was some resistance to that because some people felt that new employees possibly weren't as good and weren't as competent, but you're not going to attract good and competent employees if your pay is low because the people who are the top tier are not going to apply for the jobs in your city. So, you're going to get the leftovers if your pay is not on par with everyone else's. So, I think that keeping competitive pay is our number-one priority in retaining and recruiting new people.
Yes, and again, I agree with the direction that the city has taken as far as making sure the pay is good for the existing personnel as well as new employees coming in. And I agree also about the self-funded. That was about a year and a half ago that they went to a self-funded program. So, it's great insurance for the city employees to have that zero copay or the, I think it was $15 for the specialty, and I think their premiums was like around $600 a month from what I was reading. So, that's very good. I know my husband and I pay more than that for our insurance. And one thing that they mentioned as far as they're coming up with a new system for performance appraisals. I think it was a performance management system and learning management system, and I know Stephanie is working with that so that they can have a good way of measuring the performance, and so it won't be just a cost of living raise, it'll be based on performance. So, I think what we're doing now is good, and I'm glad that they're bringing up the pay for not just the city employees at City Hall, but also our police.
All right. Let's get to some additional questions, some other questions that were asked this evening. Here are a couple that I'll try to combine without overtaxing y'all. This person wants to know if you support the current trend of the Villarica City Council to have excessive oversight, in other words, wanting to be involved in cities, on the city staff level. And in relation to that, should the city council get involved in personnel matters to the extent of screening job posts, screening and interviewing the applicants, and being involved in hiring and firing of city employees? So, Julie- So Julie, you're first.
Okay, that was a really long question. I hope I can remember all of it. I do not know what they're referring to with the council trying to have excessive oversight. The job of the council is to represent the will of their people. It's not to manage the city on a day-to-day personnel level. I feel like I wouldn't have any, any knowledge of the work that the employees do, that their supervisor should be in charge of that. Now, when it comes to hiring someone like the city manager, yes, I feel like they should have a say in that, but I don't feel like we should micromanage the city. That's why we have a city manager, that's why we have good city employees. It's not our job.
I agree as well. I didn't know that there was a trend with excessive oversight going on with the current city council. I didn't know that. So I agree that it's best to let the department heads and supervisors manage their people. And I do agree, and I, from what I understand, I think Gil told me that the council will be faced with making the decision, or I'm not sure about making the decision, or assisting with the decision for the next city manager. So that, I think, is where the city council would come in.
I think Tom Barber is probably the best city manager we've had since I moved to Mirror Lake. He's great. He understands what's going on, and I know he came from Fairburn, but don't hold that against him. He understands what's going on, and the only thing that I've seen the city council, now again, what they do individually, but the only thing I've seen the city council on is push the city for an evaluation program. So that the department heads are evaluating their employees so they know who is, they have documentation for who is decent and who is not. So that when we get to the point of merit raises, there's documentation to support somebody getting 4% increase and somebody getting 2% increase. So I'm not sure I would call that excessive oversight. I know there's a lot of push to get this evaluation program going. And evaluation programs have to be done right, otherwise they're useless. On personal matters, I think the city managers, the city council should be a little bit involved with department heads. The Pete Zorba, the guy in charge of Water and Sewer, Chief Mansour, you know, key people like that. But I don't, I don't think the city really needs to be involved in anybody other than the department heads in hiring and firing.
All right, thank you. Here's another question that one of our attendees tonight has asked. In a vote that pits Ward Four against the city, how would you vote? Peg, you will be first, please.
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Well, I can only read them as they're asked and allow you to interpret them as you will, but in a vote that pits Ward Four against the city, how would you vote?
Well, I would be, if I'm elected city council, I'll be standing up for Ward Four. Thank you.
All right, Michael?
I think if something was bad for the entire city and something was just good for Ward Four, I would probably vote for the city. I have a hard time imagining what that would be. Is it, you know, Ward Four is one-fifth of the vote, but two-fifths of the population. So, you know, they're a substantial piece of the city. So I have a hard time thinking of a circumstance that would be only good for Mirror Lake and bad for everybody else.
And Julie.
I agree with Michael to some degree, and Peg, because my job would be to represent Ward Four, would be the people that would have elected me. I don't see any situation where it would make sense even though to stand up for Ward Four against everyone else. You could try to convince people to see your way, but one person against five, four other people won't win. So I feel like my role in that would be to explain our side and try to convince others to agree, but if it was really bad for the city, that would not be a winning situation anyway. So my job would be to represent Ward Four, and it's not my own personal agenda, it's what do they want? So I would have to speak up for them, but in a situation that would really hurt the city, we wouldn't win anyway.
Okay, well, in relation to Ward Four, here's another question from the audience. There has been tremendous growth on the east side of Mirror Lake. Is there any plan to revise the ward lines to divide the population? Michael, this would be yours.
I'm not aware of any plans to do that, but we've got the 2020 census coming up, and that would be an obvious point to sit back and look at the new ward lines. I would think the city's gonna wanna stay with the five wards, I'm correct, four wards. So I think there may be some shifting of the lines, but I don't, I don't, they would need an official government count and the, the last one in 2010 is so long ago and we've changed so much, it's virtually useless. So if they're gonna do that, use the 2020 census and take a look at and see how people are distributed. We're also building on the south side of I-20 tremendously, so I, you don't see that as much, but I, there's a lot of, a lot of growth in the city going on right now. So I think we'll just wait for the 2020 census, and we can bring that question up. It's a fair question, but I don't know of any plans right now.
Yeah, I believe the question was, are there any plans? As far as I know, there are no plans to do that, but again, like he said, with the census coming up and the population counts, it's possible they could maybe redraw the lines, add, but you, until they get the counts, I would say that there's no plan now and you couldn't really make plans without having that population counts.
I agree with both Michael and Julie. So until we have the data, it's kind of hard to manage the data. So we kinda have to wait till 2010 census results.
Julie, you'd be first for this next one. Most people like to see taxes decreased. However, our population and home building is increasing. As more services are demanded by the public, as mayor, a city council member, this question was asked tonight, as city council member, how will you deal with the challenge as demand for fire service, such as the demand for fires, for services versus tax increases? For example, creation of a community nature trail. You want me to repeat that or?
Um, sure.
Most people like to see taxes decreased. However, our population and home building are increasing. As more services are demanded by the public, as a council member, how will you deal with the challenges as demand for services versus tax increases? Example, creation of a community nature trail.
Okay, so some services are essential, fire services are essential. So if we have an increased need for that, I would say, if at all possible, of course, that you should decrease other costs in your budget. That makes sense. If you're, if you need something at your house, your household budget has to decrease in other areas to make up for that, and I feel like the city should follow that policy as well. Things like the nature trail, I know that they have a plan for that. I'm not sure if that was something the citizens wanted or if that's something that, that we came up with because also Carrollton has a nature trail and we, we have historically in Villa Rica liked to compete with Carrollton. So I feel like if it's something that the taxpayer actually wants and are willing to fund, that is okay, but for the most part, people aren't willing to increase their taxes just so they could have something like a nature trail or a welcome center. You know, I don't feel like those are things that we need to raise taxes to pay for. Essential services, yes.
Peg?
I agree. I don't, I would not want our taxes to increase for our wants, but definitely they need to increase if they need to for our needs. So as far as, like Julie said, if there's citizens, 'cause I know they have like the tourism board and whatnot, so if, if we find that the citizens are in agreement for some of the wants and they don't mind taxes for that, then great. But otherwise, I think generally, from everything I hear from my friends and neighbors, they don't want the taxes to go up, they want the taxes to come down.
If your growth is properly managed and you've got the right mix, then you get a positive outcome. If you, if you take a piece of property that's worth $5,000 and put a $70,000 home on it, the tax revenue from that piece of property goes up to help account for those services that that piece of property's gonna need. In the industrial park, if you take a $50,000 piece of property and put a half-million-dollar manufacturing plant on it, your property taxes go up and they pay for those extra services. So properly managed growth should allow us to increase our services without unduly burning certain, the existing homes. In fact, the city for the last six years has reduced the millage rate every year because property growth delivered funds to fund all these, these projects. The trailhead, the Golden Nugget Trail is a Parks and Rec thing, and I'm on the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. They're looking at a foundation to gather support for that, and they're looking at grants. They're not looking at using tax money for the trailhead. It'll be a long time before it's put in, it's like 26 miles or something like that around the city, but they're not looking at using general funds, tax money for that. They're looking at grants from charitable organizations, grants from the state, and creating a foundation that will solicit funds from private individuals. Thank you.
Okay, speaking of services, Peg, if elected to the city council, would you be looking at helping the senior population with more discounts, helping the senior center budget, offer more activities, et cetera?
So, as you might guess, I'm in the senior neighborhood of Mirror Lake, which is Reflections. I actually moved there in 2000, so I was not a senior then, but it is a 55-plus community. And as far as in the city of Villa Rica, I'm not aware, I know that there is a budget for seniors. I don't know what that budget is, but yes, I would definitely want there to be, you know, activities, recreation for seniors, and the funds to go along with that.
You can't ignore our seniors. When you get older, you may, you may not be able to drive to get to the hospital or to see your doctor or go food shopping, so there needs to be some, some kind of services available. The Parks and Rec Department does offer services at the senior center, they feed, they feed seniors there for very nominal amounts. That, a lot of that money comes from the state and from intergovernmental agreements, not from city taxpayers. As to whether you do transportation like the city of Carrollton has, where you can call and get, get transportation to a different part of the city, I don't know the answer to that because public transportation is a very sore point with a lot of people. But it's something we need to look at. Thank you.
I agree that the senior citizens cannot be ignored, that they are a vital part of our community, and if we can provide services to them within our budget, that we should do so.
All right. This person says, "Our legal bills are mounting with many calls to the city attorney for clarification and to run ideas by him. Should the city council consider the addition of an in-house attorney to control the costs?" Michael?
That's a tough one because when you bring, bring somebody inside, you have to, you have to worry about the extra cost on the budget. I mean, because you're paying not just contact fees or per hourly rate, you're paying, you know, 24 hours, you know, wages, you're paying benefits, you're paying retirement, things like that. You're providing a government vehicle if that's required, so that, I'd have to see some breakdowns on that cost. I know the questions for Dave and Mecklen have probably, have increased, but I don't know if they've looked at changing his retainer or moving him away from some kind of per hourly billing to a flat rate for something. That kind of discussion probably isn't done in closed session and not available to the public because it's compensation kind of discussions. If it's a problem, it needs to be looked at, but...
I would say that, that's a pretty easy thing to look at. You look at how much you're paying the consultant versus how much you'd pay the salary and other benefits for an in-house person to be your council, and so if you just take the financial breakdown on that, whichever way it works out better financially, it should be the way you go. I don't have those numbers either.
I agree, it doesn't, you need to look at the data, and not just for one year because you mentioned mounting fees. So maybe you could look at the past, you know, three years and, you know, and kind of study it out, and then figure out, okay, what is the going rate to hire somebody for the city, and of course factor in all the benefits as well. And then once you have that data, then you can make an intelligent decision.
All right. Julie, this person wants to know what makes Villa Rica attractive to a prospective downtown business owner, and what kind of business do we need to add to downtown?
The kinds of businesses that get added to downtown is completely based on the economy and who wants to invest in downtown. I mean, we could try to attract certain people, but in the end, I mean, I know that there was some talk in Mirror Lake that people didn't like the Taco Bell and we needed something more upscale, but that's, that's completely based on the economy and who wants to invest. So we could attempt to, to lure certain kinds of people if we wanted to, but in, at the end of the day, the kind of businesses that are gonna come here are the kind of businesses that are gonna make money. Because if your business doesn't make money, then you're going to fail, you're gonna go out of business, you have to look for a new business to replace it. So I feel like the council is not necessarily the one who needs to look for it, the people who are gonna open the business have to do the market research to see what they could make successful here. I feel like that's not even a council issue because the economy dictates what kind of businesses come to your city unless you provide financial incentive. But I do think there are things that we could do to make the downtown more attractive for the customers, which would in turn draw better businesses, or, there's nothing wrong with our businesses, I don't mean better businesses, but more businesses. For example, the Hickstown Brewing, I think that's a great addition to our downtown, and it brings in a new group of people to the downtown area. So I, I think that the question of what should we try to attract is more one of the economy and not even one of political discussion.
Well, as far as what makes Villa Rica attractive for businesses to come to the downtown area, you know, if it's a vibrant, thriving downtown, then businesses might wanna be here. We have several thrift-type and consignment-type shops, and that's great for that market. But also, I think, I don't know if any of you have been to the new boutique that, they're only open Thursday, Saturday, and, Thursday, Friday, Saturdays, and the lady had a online boutique, Shonda, Shonda, I think is her name, and she does boutique-type clothing for kids, I think up to maybe six, six years old. And it's a cute little shop. And more shops like that, I think, would help people come in here instead of going to downtown Douglasville or Carrollton or something to shop. So I think if we have attractive stores, then we'll get the, you know, the citizens to come and shop. So I think that would be the best way. And the other thing I was gonna say too, as far as, I understand that for some of the fronts of the buildings, they have grants, and they, and also they wanna maintain some of the historical preservation for some of our buildings. So that, there's a big mix that goes into who's gonna come to the downtown area. One of the businesses in Douglasville, if you haven't been to Blue Rose Art Bistro, I think that type of venue here in Villa Rica would be great.
I think business come to Villa Rica because they realize it's got a measure of quaintness, but it's also thriving and vibrant. You know, we put a lot of effort in our, into our Renaissance strategic vision plan to, on how to build downtown, how to progress downtown. We've got a very vibrant Main Street program, one of the best in the state. We've got a great manager. That Main Street program provides a lot of support to businesses that are just starting out or wanting to make changes. They may have marketing ideas, they do support on social media for them. They provide facade grants and economic improvement boost grants to local businesses so that they can paint the outside. local businesses so that they can paint the outside, put up awnings, or, or replace the chairs, if, you know, like a beauty salon needs new chairs, they provide grants for that, so there's a lot of support for small businesses here in Villarica. As to what we need, I think we need more restaurants downtown. Chris Pike, when he was the Economic Development Program Manager here, he said, "We're, we're short about four restaurants from where it should be ratio-wise. We don't need thrift shops, and we don't need engineering firms downtown. We need something that's gonna cause people to walk in and then walk along the sidewalk looking at the other stores."
All right. This same person wants to know what makes Villarica attractive to a prospective home buyer, and how can we make it more desirable to move here? So, Peg, you're up first.
So, when I was looking to purchase a home, the things that I looked at is, you know, population, this kind of schools, and the downtown area, and, and then plus just getting out and getting to meet people. So, my first impression of Villarica was, it is a great place to be, and so that's why I chose to be here. I think that as long as we continue with making sure we have a vibrant downtown, and the Mill, I mean, that, that amphitheater with all the different events that go on all year long, and even the, like the ghost train going on right now at Pine Mountain, I think Villarica has a lot of wonderful amenities that people love, and that's what makes me wanna stay here.
I think, I think there are, the land use plan that we've got currently running for Villarica adequately breaks out the types of places you can have homes and the types of homes. So, there's, there's a good mix in different parts of the city so that you can live pretty much wherever you wanna be. If you wanna be closer to Walmart, you can be there, if you wanna be at Mirror Lake and closer to Public, you can be there, but the land use plan that we've got is working well. The rates, the property taxes, we've reduced the millage rate six years in a row, and still revenues have gone up, but that, so that makes it attractive to individual home buyers, 'cause they, they, there's, there's some expectation that their taxes are not gonna significantly go up. Douglas County even increased the write-off on the homeowners exemptions when the millage rate went up, so the taxes for people in Mirror Lake did not significantly change city or county. So, there's a lot here for people to come to, there's, Parks and Rec is a great thing, they've got soccer and softball and baseball and football, and, you know, so there's stuff for families, too.
I think the thing that attracts people to Villarica is the cost of the, the housing cost that you can get here compared to what you can get closer into Atlanta, so you would move here because you are looking for housing at an affordable rate, plus we have easy access to I-20, which means that they can get to their jobs in Atlanta, and I think another reason that people that would come here to Villarica is because we do have the small-town feel, and we have a small town, so if we continue to grow and increase our population, we're essentially destroying that, I'm not saying that we can't grow at all, but we can't keep the small-town feel that attracted people here in the first place. So, I feel like the combination of the affordable housing, access to I-20, and the small-town community feel that you get here in Villarica are what attract people to this community the most.
All right, thank you. We are moving rapidly here toward our closing time, but there is one rather general question here that's been asked this evening, you all have addressed it already in one form or another, but we'll give you one more shot at it. And Michael, starting with you, as a city council member, what would you regard as the most important thing in making our community stronger overall?
We need to address the problems that we've got. We need to put to bed some of this stuff. For, for years and years and years, we kicked the can down the road on a lot of problems in the, in the city, and the problems got bigger and the costs got bigger, but we didn't do anything about it. So, I think, I think we're on the right track right now to solve some of those problems, and we're, initiate, have initiated things like a traffic survey so we can begin to solve some of those problems. We need to make it an overall desirable place, which, which means people shouldn't have to worry about water or sewer or traffic, or parking downtown, or the, you know, whether or not they could find a job in Villarica, we need to address things that they want, and those are the kinds of problems we have. So, if we solve those problems, then the overall quality of life will go up.
I think this is essentially the question you asked to start with, so I'd say that the question was that, what is the biggest issue we face?
Well, no, it's what you think is the most important thing we need to do in making the Villarica stronger overall.
I think we have to solve the, the issue of how to pay for our infrastructure without putting so much cost on the citizens.
I agree, as far as the water and sewer issue, which they're addressing, they've been addressing for the past couple of years, so I think the council's doing a great job with that. And then, secondly, would be, you know, managing traffic due to the growth. As we know, Tom Barber actually put out a great presentation about how many homes, or like a mixture between commercial and industrial, so managing that growth responsibly is what we need to do as well. And then, of course, public safety, and I, and I believe that our current chief, Mansour, is doing a great job.
All right, we are ready now for your closing statements this evening. We'll go first with Peg, and then Julie will be next, and then Michael will wind things up.
Thank you again to everyone, everyone for watching tonight, especially to Dr. Lyons and his wife. I also wanna thank the other two candidates for their interest in serving. When, when I saw that Mayor Reese was not seeking reelection, I called Gil McDougal to encourage him to run for mayor. I asked him if he knew of anyone interested in serving in Ward Four. At that time, he thought of Michael Young might be. I informed him that I was interested and asked what requirements were necessary, and so I know that I fulfilled those requirements. After that discussion, then I spoke with my husband. This, of course, is a big decision for us, because we know that when we serve, it's not just a nine-to-five type of job. We, obviously, we prayed about it, and we have a piece about our decision for me to run for council for Ward Four. I did serve on the campaign team to elect Gil, as well as the previous councilman, Mike Williamson. I volunteered with various organizations and events since I was in high school. The most recent one is American Businesswomen's Association, the Douglas County Charter Chapter. I've been president, vice president, treasurer, so that, along with my strong financial skills and my strong work ethic, integrity, and I'm good at collaborating, I think I would make the perfect person to serve on our council for Ward Four. So, I do thank you in advance for your vote, and I am humbled and honored.
Thank you again for taking the time to listen to each candidate. I hope your takeaway from tonight's forum is that I'm the candidate that best reflects your goals and values as they relate to our shared community. I would be honored to have you place your trust in me to represent you professionally and passionately as city councilwoman of Ward Four. But no matter which candidate you decide to vote for, I urge you to vote, because this is a election year where there's no national or state big race, and so voter turnout's gonna be small, so each vote is gonna have more impact than it normally would. So, whoever you choose, know that your vote is important. Thank you.
Villarica's a wonderful city, it has great people as residents. However, that doesn't mean that there aren't problems that require extensive amounts of effort to understand and then craft sensible, effective solutions for those problems. There are no silver bullet solutions to the problems facing Villarica. In the past, the city's been a number of years being adverse to solving those problems, and not wanting to spend money, just leave it the same, don't do anything. We can't do that anymore. The issues are so complex that several formal studies have had to be initiated simply to understand how complex, how difficult the problem is, and where to start to solve the problem. There've been a number of cases where we solved one problem only to waste that money because we had a different, another problem that we had to solve, and that ruined whatever we did on the first problem. So, the studies that they initiated are to figure out how to do this so that we don't backtrack and waste money, 'cause we certainly don't have the money to waste. The residents of Mirror Lake deserve a representative that is involved, informed, and invested in the community. Deserve a representative that has experienced understanding complex and multifaceted issues. The residents of Mirror Lake deserve a representative that understands financial budgets and money flows. There's only one representative running that has been committed to the city of Villarica, has served on multiple boards, multiple commissions, even to the SPOLOs commissions for Villarica and Douglas County. I'm asking for your vote for city council. Thank you.
All right. Thank you to the candidates and to all of you for attending and for the questions you've asked, and we are adjourned.